Okay.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'll stand. Our town attorney is going to give a brief summary of the ordinance.
Thank you, Leah.
My pleasure. So we went over it in fairly great detail last week, but I think what I'll do is just give a real thumbnail sketch of what this is about. As many of these emergency ordinances have, there's lots of whereas, whereas provisions. Basically, those recitals talk about why it is that the board wants to do this. And obviously, it's based on the fact that the governor has issued her reopening plan. And the fact is that many businesses in town that are suffering are indoor businesses, such as restaurants and retail. And so what we're aiming for here is to allow outdoor business activities, which include things like having outdoor seating for restaurants that may not have been approved for that. Same with retail businesses, allowing outdoor sales, use of sidewalks, and outdoor areas that traditionally would require town approval, site plan approval, site plan amendments, those kinds of things. So in order to help promote economic stimulus and to relax rules that would otherwise be in place, the town is going to, as the title discusses, going to relax or suspend. And I should say that, Carl, you get an award for the mouthful of longest ordinance title in Wells's history.
We paid for it, Leah, so you gotta get your money's worth.
You got the award, right? All right, but we did reduce the name, so I'm just gonna read off what the new name is to make it simpler. It's just Emergency Ordinance to temporarily relax or suspend certain provisions of the Code of the Town of Wells to assist businesses suffering economic loss due to COVID-19 in a manner consistent with the governor's reopening plan. So we went through the recitals and the basis or the reasons why this ordinance is being contemplated. Part one of the ordinance basically talks about what that temporary relaxation and suspension of certain provisions are, talks about outdoor activities, which we discussed a little bit. They will, in order to actually, if a business wants to get this benefit of this ordinance, then again, we're trying to keep it user-friendly and to reduce administrative burden on both the town and those folks who want to avail themselves of the ordinance. What they will need to do is to submit a plan, a written-in-plan, again, it doesn't have to be fancy, to the town manager explaining what they want to do, where they want to do it. And that is basically the submission criteria. This will apply to all existing businesses, just to be clear that if a business has not been permitted in the Town of Wells, this does not apply to any new businesses. Those kinds of businesses would have to go through the process. And the things that will be relaxed are things like site plan approval, like, say, building permits for perhaps temporary structures like tents or awnings or temporary shelters for restaurants or retail businesses. Things like setbacks and dimensional requirements, those things will be relaxed. Same thing with respect to signage, also with respect to the use of sidewalks and certain town property. Again, usually that's a bit of a process and approval process. Those things will be relaxed. The town manager will have the ability to allow such, you know, outdoor seating or displays in the event, of course, that it doesn't create any kind of hazard to pedestrian or vehicle traffic. Same thing with respect to town manager will have the authority to waive standards and allow use of public streets and rights of way in consultation with public safety folks to make sure, again, that that doesn't cause any undue risk or hazard. We talked about this last week, but with respect to Bablo, that being, you know, liquor licenses, et cetera. My understanding of that is that in the event a restaurant has not been permitted through Bablo to have outdoor seating, they will need municipal approval for that. And so we put a provision in this ordinance, hopefully, to address that, that this will serve as essentially, I don't want to say a blanket authority, but basically that Bablo, I think, is looking for some evidence from a town to say that, yes, we approve of this expansion. So that is reason why there's something about liquor licenses in this ordinance is to essentially make Bablo happy. There are some enforcement provisions in here that essentially talk about what the violation, it's a minimum of $100 or a maximum per violation, of 1,000, excuse me, per violation. And one of the additional penalties for violation of the ordinance is a revocation of an existing business license after a hearing with the Board of Selectmen. The effective date of the ordinance, it becomes effective on June 1st to mirror the current governor, sorry, the current reopening plan for the governor. As you, I'm sure, are very well aware that June 1st is the date slated for restaurants and other businesses to open. Whether or not it's true, I've heard some scuttlebutt that there may be changes to that. I have no idea if that is actually true, but that triggered a thought in my mind that I would suggest a minor amendment to this Part 4 effective date, where it reads, "The ordinance shall become effective on June 1st, 2020." I would have some additional language added to say, "And shall be in full force and effect to the extent that it is not inconsistent with change, any changes the governor may enact to her phased reopening." Just to be clear, I don't, quite frankly, the governor's executive orders talk about how, you know, there needs to be consistency with municipal ordinance. And while we can have things that are more restrictive, we cannot have things that are less restrictive. So I would suggest that language be put in there for clarity, just in case there's some change to her reopening plan to accommodate that.
Well, I think it should also be understood that, who knows, maybe there's be a relaxation prior to June 1st. And if the, I think we should also incorporate that if it does change, whether it's sooner.
And I think, I think that that language that I'm suggesting would cover both either way.
Okay. So the gist of this new ordinance is to help businesses any way, shape, that we can, as long as everyone plays on a level playing field and everyone does what they're supposed to do, which is barely contacting the town and showing on a drawing or a plan what they plan on doing. Is that the short version? You're muted. Yes, okay. Questions from the board?
And shall be, so and shall be in line with the governor's orders, right?
Yes.
Good, better, and different, yes.
Correct, either way, up or down?
Yeah.
Okay. It almost goes without saying from a legal perspective, but I think when folks are looking at this ordinance, they don't necessarily aren't analyzing it with a benefit or curse of a law degree. So I think if, you know, it should just reference that it is tied to the governor's reopening plan.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
Oh, that's awesome.
Take a motion, Kathy.
I move to close the public hearing and enact the emergency ordinance, including the amendment that on Part 4 that says, "And shall be in line with the governor's reopening plan."
I'm not, I don't want to not second it, I'm seconding it, but we didn't have a public here. I mean, what if there's people that want to say something, right? I mean, if we-
Well, this is true. Yeah, well, we put a motion out there, we still talk about it.
All right, I just want to make sure we're gonna let people, if they have a question, that's all. I'll second it and let discussion happen.
Yeah, that's, Brittany, do you have questions?
I'm not on the order.
That was easy.
But it makes, it makes us legal, and if nobody has any further questions, then we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, thank you.
And good luck, everybody, all the businesses, good luck.
Yep. Next on the agenda is COVID-19 update. John, looks like you're standing again.
Eric?
Yep.
All right. So what has happened since our last meeting is that we've had Memorial Day weekend. The weekend went very well, very quiet, except for Friday, when the weather was warm and there was a whole lot of people in town. And it was interesting, but over the weekend, it was cool down at the beach, and we really didn't have that many issues at all during that time period. We do have some orders coming through from the governor. It will probably be by the end of the week on the elections on July 14th. What we are understanding is the state is encouraging absentee voting. We have been working with our town clerk. She will be ramped up for the additional absentee ballots.
Will we be open, will we, will we also be able to go and vote in person? Because that's important. Okay, thank you.
Yes, we will. What we will be needing, and this should come from her, but what we will be needing is election workers. It's not going to be your typical election. There'll be a lot of different protections in place. And so we urge people to use absentee voting as a way to deal with standing in lines or injecting yourself into that sort of environment. We are getting quite a few applicants for the Lodging Facility Advisory Committee. The applications are heavy on lodging, lodging in. We do have one or two residents. And we do have a volunteer from the Planning Board, Bob Sullivan, as well as, well, Bob Sullivan and then Sean Roach is the advisor or a member of that committee. So I guess what I'm gonna ask the selectmen is how you want to interview. Do you want to interview each one on a Zoom five-minute interview process that we can set up before your next meeting? Or do you want to have a different way to do it?
John, how many, oh, sorry, go ahead, show them the other chair.
No, I was just gonna say, I think it's, I think Zoom interviews are fine. They're just five-minute interviews, should be pretty easy. I think those will work fine.
Can we have the board have a cutoff date of maybe a week from? You probably won't be ready on June 2nd to do it, but because we're still getting applicants in. Do you want to have a cutoff date for applications?
We didn't have a cutoff date already, right?
Nope.
Well, couldn't the cutoff date be June 2nd, then we can do the interviews another-
On the 16th?
Right.
That's fine. So June 2nd is the cutoff.
Well, they have to report back to us by August 25th. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's plenty of time, yeah.
So that list that you have in your packets, there are probably, probably six to seven more candidates.
Oh, good, good. It's always an-
The beach parking lots are, through the efforts of Chief Putnam and our enforcement, park enforcement, Sally, all the meters are working. All the parking lots are open, and they will be open for meter pay and sticker checking. As of today, Jody, our finance director, said they have sold something in the order of 3,000?
No, 1562.
1562, 1,562 stickers. And the sales are going pretty well through the automation that we've set up, as well as if you're coming in for re-registration or something, you can get it that way. Going to how operations are at Town Hall. Through the efforts of the fire chief, we have lifeguards outside as greeters. The appointment process is working. We are booked for the next week or two. And so we are taking some walk-ins, but they may have to wait a little bit out in the tent area. So it is, it is working. We are lowering that backlog of re registrations. Jody tells me from the 4,500 down to 30-
Just over 3,000.
Just over 3,000 re registrations. Of course, as you get into June, you're gonna see that number bump up again, so. But we are making progress and things are working pretty well. The library is still reassessing their ability to open. They are doing curbside service June 1st, which means you can go online, order your books from the catalog, and they will deliver them to you at curbside. But entry into the library will be, is still being worked out. She has some plans that she wants to give to the trustees on June 10th. And so if you can imagine having 15 people circulate inside, picking up books and so forth, and then trying to sanitize everything, it is, it is a fairly large problem out there. The coastal community collaboration, more and more towns are opening their beaches up. As we have, New Hampshire is considering opening shortly in June. The North Shore is also beginning to think through their beach openings. What we need to think about is social distancing, and I think everyone's aware of that when you go to the beach, we hope. And so there won't be a huge amount of enforcement down on the beach itself. We have some signs that we are putting up, but we'll, we'll see how it, how it goes. We are also posting our new beach regulations on Facebook regarding the tent size and different issues that we worked on so hard in January and February. And then a little bit about boards and committees restarting. The Board of Selectmen decided that they'll go back to their regular schedule on the first and third of each month. We are gonna continue Zoom meetings for the Board of Selectmen. The Planning Board has decided to come back. Their first meeting will be June 15th. It will be an in-person setting at Town Hall in the meeting room. They have put together a pretty good protocol on how to work it, especially with public hearings. That was sent to the board, was in your packets. We will be looking at other committees that can begin to come back and meet, whether it's by Zoom or in person. For example, our Personnel Advisory Committee, which is a committee that works with our HR director, will possibly be in person. Our Energy Committee may be a Zoom meeting. Our Comprehensive Plan Committee is a very large committee, and we're not sure how that can work in our meeting room. And so we're gonna have to think through that. We're gonna work with Selectmen Roach, Sean Roach, and Selectmen McLeod to see if we can get the consultant reviewed and scoped down for interview process. And we'll be sending you or asking you of some dates that you might be available to do that with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Pop Plan Committee. So that's, that's basically it. We, we are, Wells Fund is around $6,300, and it's doing pretty good.
Anyone have any questions for John and all that information?
Quick comment, I find it ironic that you can sit on the beach, but you can't do it in a Zoom meeting at Town Hall, you have to stand.
Good one.
I do want to say, I walked the beach twice this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday. I thought it was great, people were well-spaced out, there was no issues, social distancing at all, and everyone seemed happy to be there, it was beautiful weather for a good walk. So happy that things are going well.
Great. Anything else before we move on to good news?
Nope.
John, go ahead.
So, good news is we have a couple of letters thanking the Town Hall staff, particularly the General Office, for the good work. One letter came in from Mike Kaplan, who's on our Harvard Advisory Committee. He was amazed that through wanting to do several different functions, he was able to get an appointment that allowed him to do three different functions within a 15-minute period, and he was very appreciative of that. Another one was to note that, just a quick note to say, Wells City Hall employees were very helpful. I called and left the phone number, and the woman who called me back was very nice and was able to work through everything to get me a beach pass online. I can clever update is that with the COVID-19, they've been very productive on the beach. They have eight active nests on Wells Beach and one on Drake's Island. Seven nests have incubating eggs on Wells Beach. One new nest was established today. This is from Susan Craig, our monitor chair. And it's been a difficult year with the blockage of some of the rightaways. We are going to open up Rightaway 14 this week, so people don't have to walk that far down from the parking lot. And we expect that the access point will be available to us once the eggs hatch on the rightaway. They'll be naturally moved down to where the food supply is located. So we should be able to open that up in a couple of weeks.
Great, anything from the board?
Yeah, I'll just say quickly, today, long day at school today, out on the fields, not in the school itself, but the kids got to film a real graduation. It was spaced out, so that each kid got an opportunity to go on stage, get their diploma, have their parents take a picture. We had a professional videographers there, we had professional photographers there. It was an unreal day, I think there was some trepidation behind it, because everybody wants to do what is tradition, so to speak. I gotta say that this class will probably remember their graduation much better than most of our other classes ever do. I will also say that the, the work behind, you know, from Mr. Daley, Ms. Sheehy, and Mr. Gould, and my wife Cindy, on getting this to work right was unreal. And it worked so smooth and was so nice, and the kids were so excited, the parents were so excited. It was, it was a great day to watch, you know, sitting back and watching, it was really, really cool. And now these kids will have this video that they'll produce, this group will produce. And then on June 11th, I have to make sure that they'll show it up at the drive-in movie theater in Saco, and they'll be able to see this whole production. It's really kind of a cool thing, though, their graduation will be different, and, but it'll be awesome. So we're looking forward to that. So great day, and thank you to the administration for going out of their way to figure this whole thing out. It wasn't easy.
Sounds cooler than our graduation.
Congratulations, Class of 2020.
Yes.
Absolutely. Anything else from anyone? Moving on to open to the public, Brittany, you have a few questions, I'm sure?
Yes, we do. First question, the Governor's D E C D Commissioner said last Wednesday that folks could not satisfy the quarantine requirement by staying in a lodging facility for 14 days. Does that apply to seasonal cottage communities, Summer Village, Sea Glass, Somerscape, et cetera, and other seasonal communities, such as Meadow Ledge Mobile Homes? Most of the owners are planning on coming June 1st to quarantine in their second homes, and clarification is needed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, both the town attorney and I have been working on this, looking at what the Commissioner is saying. We've actually talked to the Commissioner. And what, what she and others in the state government is saying that if the person owns the property, such as in Sea Glass or in any of the three-season cottages or in Meadow Ledge, if they actually own this property, they can quarantine within their own property coming up. It's when you rent that property that the, as a lodging unit, that the party coming in for the rented property needs to have pre-quarantine for the 14 days or the amount of time of their stay.
John, if I could just add, that also applies to RV and campgrounds.
Next question, when will the 14-day quarantine rule expire? And can the board vote to eliminate it?
No, the board cannot vote to do away with the quarantine, that is the governor's order. There are no longer any orders from the Town Board of Selectmen regarding lodging at this time.
Was a letter or email sent regarding rethinking the 14-day isolation needing to be in the state of Maine?
Yes.
Can I come from Massachusetts to sit on the beach?
Yes.
Will the arcade be open this summer?
I'm sorry, Brittany. Say it again?
The last question?
Yes, please.
Will the arcade be opening this summer?
That's a real good question, I have not heard one way or the other. Yeah, it's, the building's locked up, we haven't seen anybody in that area. Doesn't mean they're not there, but we, we just haven't seen people.
Clarification on your last statement, John, does that apply to condo hotels?
If, if the party who is trying to use it receives a tax bill and they own it, it does.
Okay. Can I just clarify one thing? I just wanted to make clear that in our conversations with the Commissioner, that if it is being used, if it is your seasonal residence, then yes. But I think that has to be saying, if it's your seasonal residence, then that is what the Commissioner is saying. That if you own it. Sorry, John.
No, I, as I was trying to say before, if, if you're using your unit to rent out, as so many do, then the party that is coming in has to pre-quarantine before they use it. If you, the owner, is, are coming up to use it, then you have to- If you, the owner, is, are coming up to use it, then you have to quarantine using your unit or figuring it out some way in Maine.
There are some questions here about the ability to come and sit on the beach. If you come from Massachusetts to sit on the beach, or come to Maine to order takeout, do you have to quarantine, or can you come in for the day and leave?
That is one of the questions we have posed to, to the Commissioner. What I can tell you this afternoon, in meeting on a Zoom conference with her and other town city managers, they are putting together a fairly large guidance on quarantine, which should be out in the next week. And so I, I really can't answer that question, but what you're really asking is, day trippers, are they allowed to come and recreate on, in Wells, or in Maine, period? And that's, that's something I, I just can't answer at this point.
Next question, can the cap, Town please install hand sanitizer stations by the various beach porta potties and/or benches by Casino Square?
We, we certainly can do that. What I can tell you is the hand sanitizers do disappear, and I'm, I'm happy about that, but what our PortaJohn contractor, subcontractor has said is that they can't keep enough in the unit because people are taking them. So we will look at some other type of dispenser and try, try to accommodate that.
Will masks be required outside when social distancing is not possible?
Governor's order says that masks are required if you cannot social distance.
Commissioner Johnson stated that seasonals that own property can come up now. Can seasonals that own units come up now to quarantine?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing beach parking passes to be purchased online. Will the Town consider the purchase of other permits and licenses online moving forward?
We, we are looking at different, different ways, if you're thinking about building permits or anything like that, we are looking at other types of software programs that will help in the automation of those permits. But clearly, there are other online services where you can get a document such as rapid renewal, re-registration of your car, and some others, if you look on our website.
What should be done for those who ordered a beach parking sticker, but they have not received it yet?
They, they should receive a note saying that you, your receipt for the online purchase can be your pass until you receive your parking sticker.
There was a question here for Sean, when will tickets be available? I assume that's for Project Stimulus?
Yep, Project Stimulus tickets will become available tomorrow. And we will go live on Thursday for another info session on this, on Facebook Live, so be sure to tune in Thursday night at 8:00 for more information, but we'll have a post tomorrow afternoon, or tomorrow evening, about the ticket sales going live. And tickets we sold via PayPal and Venmo, and then you'll receive a form in order to fill out your, your basket raffle entries, and then the live auction itself. And the basket raffle will both be on June 18th at 8:00 p.m.
There's still a lot of confusion about when seasonals can come, is it June 1st as of now?
The Commissioner's recent decisions on seasonals in, in Wells and wherever, for, especially for campgrounds and RV parks, has been if you own a site and your RV is your primary seasonal unit, you can come now. If you're in a unit like Sea Glass and want to come up, you can come up if the facility is open and quarantine in place.
When can the health club open?
That, which, a health club or any of the health clubs. I don't think she, the Governor has released that yet. She actually drew back the opening of that for a while.
John, I think, I think, just to put a finer point on that, you're absolutely right, they extended the opening of gyms, but currently, my understanding is that they're allowing for outdoor classes, so long as social distancing is possible, as well as, I think, one-on-one training sessions, but that's it.
A few questions on this, renters can pre-quarantine before coming up, but owners who have just quarantined for two months elsewhere have to quarantine again for 14 days, is that true? And if so, why is that?
Well, let's differentiate, if, if you're coming from a Maine town, if you're a Maine resident and going into a unit, you don't need to quarantine. If you're coming from out of state into your unit, the one that you're paying a tax bill on, you need to quarantine once you're in the state of Maine. If you are a renter or a lodging user after June 1st, you need to pre-quar, pre-quarantine yourself before you go into that lodging unit. Now, how you do that, I don't know.
John, if I can clarify that a little, I know it, it's really hard to follow all of the logic here, or some would argue, lack thereof, but one of the things that Commissioner Johnson said in our conversation was that the point for allowing residents and folks who have already been here for at least the quarantine period, is that because some people have, some out-of-staters have been here for more than 14 days, and they want to support other lodging units, they say they have a home here, and they want to go somewhere else and stay in a hotel. And so for those people who are out-of-staters, who have been in the state for more than 14 days, they can use these lodging facilities that aren't their own, like if they want to go to a hotel, or rent a VRBO, or something like that. It's, it's, it's that limited exception for those people.
We, we've also asked, because I know many people who own seasonals, that they'll bring their families up for the summer, and a husband or wife goes back to Boston, or Hartford, or wherever, and they work the week and stay at their primary residence. And what happens when that person comes back to their summer house for the weekend? What will they have to do, if anything? That question has been posed to the Commissioner also.
What is the process for renters staying in private homes?
If you have a short-term rental agreement, you will, after June 1st, you will have to quarantine yourself for the time of the stay, if it's less than 14 days, or 14 days.
We mentioned that one can use the beach if under quarantine, does that apply to everyone, residents, non-residents, et cetera?
You can use the beach, yes, you can use the beach. If you're fortunate enough to walk, be able to walk to the beach, you can walk to the beach, if you drive, you'll park in one of our public parking lots.
John, I think just, we need to clarify, I think the question may have said, if you're in quarantine, can you use the beach?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. No, you can't. If you're in quarantine, you're locked down.
Are stores allowed to open on June 1st? I assume this means a retail store?
Depending on what it is, yes. Again, all of this is contained in the state CDC website and, and community development website. So it depends on what, what the retail is.
We're just getting a lot of questions about the quarantine and the beach. Can we just confirm, day trippers can use the beach, but those who are here to start their season must quarantine and not go out in public places? Can we just confirm whether or not that's?
Day trippers have, again, that is a question we posed to the Commissioner, and I can't give you a definitive answer on, on that right now. But my guess, my guess is, we're gonna know very shortly. I mean, that, that is so, so much Wells, to have people come up and do a day with us. So it's not, it's not the Town trying to prevent that, it is the Governor's trying to determine what, what if anything should be done about it.
Why will hotels and motels open up to out-of-state visitors?
I believe they're taking reservations starting in June, so it will be July, I believe.
Are there any regulations as to when pools can open in facilities such as Summer Village, Sea Glass, or Beach Dreams for owners when they open on June 1st? Is it up to each individual facility?
It, it is, but it's, I believe there is Maine CDC guidance on, on that, and you need to have your facility manager review those, that guidance from the state.
Are the current quarantine rules posted anywhere?
It's website.
Yeah, again, on the Maine CDC COVID-19 website, halfway down the page is a frequently asked question link that is updated every time a change is made, so you really need to check every day, but in there is like 20 some odd pages of do's and don'ts, and I would check that.
What if we don't own land but pay taxes? When can we come up as a resident of the Meadow Ledge?
I, I believe the park is going to be open June 1st. If you own a unit in the park, if I understand the question, then you need to come up and quarantine.
How is this going to be enforced?
Yeah, we, we, we get this question every week, it's, it's self, self-enforcement. I gotta tell you, if your neighbors are out, out there, it's like Mrs. Kravitz on Bewitched, we're gonna get the calls.
There's still a lot of questions, you know, that we've already discussed here about quarantine, and when people can come up, but I think we've answered those for now, must you want me to keep reading them?
No, I think we've answered.
Okay, there's one non-COVID-related question. Let me just find it, sorry. There's a safety concern on Stewart Street, there are large sinkholes all over the street, is there anything being done to fix that?
Stewart Street is a private road. We are waiting to work with the residents on that street, and we'll be there to, to assist in whatever manner. I know there had been some work done to get some pricing, and what, what needs to be done on that street. We, as, through public safety, put some cones there when we first saw the sinkholes develop. Those sinkholes are caused from old culverts that have deteriorated and need to be replaced.
Thank you.
Also, John, from a safety standpoint, I can see the question, they have concerns about fire and police. We went out there, we cordoned it off, we're aware of it, it actually shows up on our screen behind here, it tells us exactly where the hole is, and what addresses need to be accessed through Flintlock. So that's up there for all emergency personnel all the time until that's resolved, so just to, just to help alleviate our concerns with the safety down there.
Another quarantine question, can the 14-day quarantine be done out of state before coming into Wells?
Unfortunately, no, it cannot.
If I have a unit at Meadow Ledge, can we have food delivered?
I'm not sure if we have Uber deliver here, or McDonald's, I think, does have that, someone in the back is telling me, but some of the parks are starting this service for their people, and so you should ask your park manager if he has that available.
DoorDash is also available, yeah.
And for grocery stores, I know Shaw's in Sanford, if you go online, you can order your groceries and they'll deliver for a fee, so that's available for folks as well.
Yeah, we order from Village Food Market, that's a good option, if you're looking for groceries, they deliver.
Aside from the repeat questions we're getting on quarantine and the June 1st date, that's all for new questions right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Moving on to current agenda items, we're on to update discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases, and personnel. First discussion and action on setting an informational hearing on the town meeting fiscal 21 budget and warrant article during the Board of Selectmen regular meetings as follows, June 2nd and 16th, and July 7th at 6:00 p.m. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, let's go.
Okay. Next item is discussion and action on updates, personnel committees, assignments, resignations, and issues, there's nothing from the Town Manager or from the Board of Selectmen. So our next item then is discussion and action on accepting donations and bequests, first being $1,718.34 from the scoop deck to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Can you go back to the informational hearings and, and vote on it? Need a motion and?
Oh, because it doesn't say you need a motion, okay.
Okay, Kathy Makler.
Yep, sure, let me see, discussion on action, okay. I make a motion that we hold a public hearing as follows, June 2nd, June 16th, and July 7th at 6:00 p.m., and the, I assume it's gonna be in the Littlefield Meeting Room at Wells Town Hall.
Or via Zoom.
Or via Zoom.
Or via Zoom, right. Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Our next donation is a $15 donation from the Friends of the Wells Public Library, supporting the Wells Public Library to purchase canopy service.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero again, thank you. Last donation is $3,000 from the Friends, supporting the Wells Public Library to the Wells Public Library for the second quarter programming budgets.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero again, thank you. Next is discussion and action on approving the minutes of the May 19th, 2020 selectmen's meeting. Any corrections or changes need to be done?
No. I move the, for the approval of the May 19th, 2020 selectmen's meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Good job again, Cindy. Onto new business. We are open to the public a second time this evening. Brittany, any new questions?
Yep, a few new questions. First one, last week, the board talked about asking the governor to ease restrictions on out-of-state people that have already quarantined. Has this request gone out?
Yes, it has.
A couple of questions here on some of our roads. Will the speeding and drag racing on Atlantic have be addressed?
Yes, it has. There'll be radar enforcement during the summer down there.
Good.
A question on Swamp John Road. Why was the road torn up when the town did not have a bid to complete the project? There's also concern about what was sprayed down today and how it's sticking to cars. The question is, will that affect drinking water and/or pets that are outside?
I believe what was sprayed down was liquid calcium chloride, which is a dust control agent put on to gravel roads to hold the dust and tighten the road up. The reason the road was pulled apart was the, it was decided that the whole road needed to be reconstructed with proper drainage put in. This was a way, it was felt at that time to put the road in a condition for the reconstruction to occur. A series of events happened that the road base did not hold up. And so in light of that, we, we continue to grade and try to do the best we can. There is a vote on town meeting to, as part of the bond issue, to fund the total reconstruction of that road as the primary project for late summer into fall. And so it should be completely done by early November.
Regarding the letter that was sent to the governor, did she respond?
No, she has not.
All right, that seems to be everything again, except for the repeat questions that we're getting on quarantine and the June 1st ease of restrictions. I'm just doing one final look through. Yep, I believe that's it.
I had a quick question. At the, at the onset of this, we'd had a discussion about having our EMS, you know, services, medical related services, fire and everything kind of pulled back when we were expecting a huge, you know, catastrophe here. Have we changed the directive for the fire department to be responding to calls? Are they going out to those calls now that we'd asked them to hold off? I, I feel it appropriate that we probably have them. If not, start responding again.
There is a meeting of the three chiefs tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon, and that is being discussed.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
John, two more questions came through. Who is responsible for fixing the sinkholes on Stewart Street?
Really, the property owners on Stewart Street. There is a program that the town runs that is a road betterment program that can be of assistance to them. But there has to be a request made by the majority of the property owners on Stewart Street.
How will taxes be impacted from this crisis?
What, on Stewart Street or on COVID-19?
COVID-19.
COVID-19. We believe that our fourth quarter, which is, we're on financial year July, so we're in our fourth quarter. We have four more payrolls to go through. It should end, we should end in the black because we've had a very strong three-quarter year. The fourth quarter is dropping off, but tax payments are there. If we can get the backlog of re-registrations, that, that is bringing quite a bit of money in. We are working with our auditors to look at the excise tax that is due but uncollectible at, at this time and see what they will do with that. So we should end the year, financial year, okay. Looking into FY '21, we are taking steps to look at what can be put aside, what can be held back for capital improvement projects and, and looking at maybe a 5% to 10% cutback in operations until we can see what is going to happen with the reopening of Maine and the economy.
That's everything.
Perfect.
John, do we know the expected tax increase from our road improvement projects that we have, the ones going on the warrant article for this election?
For the bond issue?
The bond.
The impact on the bond is zilch for, for at least a couple of years.
Other than the interest payments, correct?
Well, even, even the interest payments will be paid by the ban, bond anticipation notes.
Right.
Do you have anything to add under the town manager's report, John?
Very quickly, one of our own employees passed away. She was someone that probably not a lot, lot of people remember, but I certainly do. Christine Pierce passed away. Christine was the glue that kind of held the assessing and the town together back when she was a part of the family here. She was hired in October 1956 as office manager for the assessor. She served as deputy town clerk '68 through '71 and the assessor's secretary until retirement in November 1990. She lived right up the road here. In her retirement, she worked for York Hospital as a volunteer. And she was a lovely lady that really was very, very good for the whole town hall to have working for us.
Yeah, I, can I say something? Yeah. I, I, I had the privilege of working with Christine for many years in the assessing office, and I can tell you, she was elegant. She was a lady. She was the nicest person you'd ever want to have in your office. And her concern was always to make sure that everyone was, was dealt fairly with and was greeted professionally. So she was just a wonderful person to, to work with, and I'm, I'm sad that she passed away, but she had a great life.
If nothing else, take a motion to adjourn.
Can I say one thing real quick?
No, go ahead.
We, there's a lot of bad things that happen on social media and stuff like that. There's one site I want to point out. There's a site called Wells Main Now and Then. Sean, am I right on that?
Yeah.
He helps me out with these things. But if you want to see the history of Wells and some really cool pictures of, of, like, what this town looked like, we, I use it in one of my classes at school a lot. It has some of the greatest pictures, like, people are posting like tons of old, I think John's grandfather posts quite a bit. But there's some really cool old pictures of everything that this town has in it. And if so, if you, if you're fooling around on social media, getting sick of all the rumors and all the stuff you see posted, go to that site, because it's, it's pretty cool what they do on that site. I know there's a lot of people on there, but a lot of Wells history going on on that site. And so take a look at it. There's some awesome pictures.
Definitely my favorite Facebook page. It's amazing. Let's post it on there. It's unreal. The pictures that they have dating back to the 1800s. And, you know, everyone, there's a lot of active members on that page that are posting a lot of great pictures and a lot of great old historical documents too. It's pretty cool.
I saw, I saw just recently, they did a, one of Vanda Forbes Senior and Marguerite, and then the picture was actually Ruth, which people don't really remember Ruth Forbes, the, the daughter.
Sister. Sister, yeah.
Yeah, so it was a cool, there's just a lot of great pictures of the beach and stuff. So take a look at it if you want to see those history of Wells and how it's changed so much.
Yeah, one of my first jobs was with, was with the elder, older Mr. Forbes and Marguerite. They were, they were great people.
One of the funniest, I don't know why we're gonna do this right now, but one of the funniest stories, I used to have to, when I worked for Forbes, sometimes old, old, I call them old man Vanda, it's probably not respectful, but the older Vanda would come in and you'd have to watch him because he'd sneak over about noon time to pour himself a beer off the tap and, and he'd leave the tap on because he got nervous that Vanda would catch him getting a, a beer from the tap and then run away and the tap, which the beer would still be running out of the tap, so you have to go close it off for him. Great people, so. Sorry, Carl, I just, Wells, Wells Main Now and Then, it's a great site.
Well, we'll take any kind of positive information anytime.
Yeah.
John, did you have anything to add, John?
Me?
Yeah, were you trying to get in on that?
Oh, I was just saying, the next time we meet in person, my grandfather actually gave me an aerial survey at Wells from 1940 that, I can't remember what government agency took it, but US geographical survey or something like that. Astounding to see the difference. You can still see the landlines from all the old stone walls all over, all over town, so.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, really cool picture. I know Carolyn Eppro posted a couple of vintage aerial photographs back from the 70s. And it is amazing to see what, how much the beach has changed since the 70s up till today.
I always thought if they, if they filmed it every year and then ran it fast, you could see it grow, grow, grow like this. You could see it going like that. Yeah.
There was an awesome one of the sand dunes down by the jetty. You, you'd be surprised how big those sand dunes were back in the day. And they were, I mean, you, it would be struggle though. I wish we still had them because I'd have the football team go run up those things, probably get in trouble with the pipe and clovers, but I, I'd do it anyway, but.
Before the houses were there, they were over 100 feet high, so.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. Wow. Awesome.
Sorry, Carl, we kind of took over the meeting talking about Wells.
Listen, anytime, anytime there's positive information, the meeting can go on forever. Well, if there's nothing else.
Are we ready for the motion?
Ready for the motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't asking for it. I thought we'd just stay on for a few more minutes.
Safe travels, Kathy Beck.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah.
Five zero and motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Safe, safe, and we look forward to June 1st.
Okay, take care, everybody. Stay safe.